Testing.
Good evening. Today is Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are at the Green Ladle, and we will call the meeting to order at five thirty-seven P. M. And start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll start committee member introductions with Councilor Harriman.
Scott Harriman, City Council Representative to the School Committee.
Donnyc Leant, Ward Seven.
Megan Heard, Ward Six.
Iman Osman, Ward Five.
Craig Sharpentier, Ward Four.
Elizabeth Eames, Ward Three.
Janet Bowden, Ward Two.
Phoenix McGlaughlin, Ward One.
Megan Parks, At Large.
Jake Langley, Superintendent.
Karen Puckett, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like set aside? Seeing none, the consent agenda is adopted. Agenda item number four is public input. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on non-agenda items now and on agenda items later. Speakers must adhere to our public comment policy, B. E. D. H., which is available at the back of the room and on the L. P. S. website. These meetings exist to conduct school committee business. The purpose of public comment is to share thoughts on school and educational matters. Committee members and school staff will not reply during this time. Comments must be directed to the chair and be civil. By law, comments may not pertain to a specific staff or students. Comments about individuals must be directed privately to the appropriate L. P. S. staff member. Student privacy must be maintained. Public comment period is thirty minutes unless extended due to unusual circumstances. Priority goes to Lewiston residents and parents, students, or employees of L. P. S. Before starting, please state your name, town or city of residence, and affiliation to Lewiston Public Schools. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Lisa Jones. I live in Ward Two in Lewiston. My affiliation with Lewiston Public Schools is simply that I am a resident of Lewiston, and I care about the outcome of what happens in Lewiston Public Schools. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Ward Five residents, as they do not have a ward representative on that school committee. The purpose of a school committee member is to serve as a liaison, informing the public about schools and listening to public feedback. There is nobody on that board who lives within Ward Five in Lewiston that is able to fulfill that role for these residents. Ironically, when that seat was lawfully vacated when the former member moved out of the ward, it was apparently unlawfully filled by a mayoral appointment. I don't even need to mention the other allegations about the current sitting Ward Five committee member this evening, because they should not be relevant to the committee's decision to remove him due to ineligibility. Despite the chair of this committee declaring publicly that the city clerk had settled the matter on the Ward Five member's physical address. Whose name did I do? That's what I thought. It's not. You can be wrong. And then you can let me finish?
Excuse me.
You can let me finish.
Here, you want to control your meeting?
Everybody needs to speak in turn. I have a statement from our attorney to read before anything proceeds, and I will pause the time. According to the Lewiston City Charter, the school committee shall be the judge of the qualifications of its members, including members appointed, excluding members appointed by the city council, and of the grounds for forfeiture of their office. According to the charter and state law, the committee's deliberation is in executive session unless the member charge requests it be done in public session. However, any vote would be held in public session. There should be no discussion about this that could rise to the level of defamation tonight, including anyone's name or accusations.
There have been no names made or accusations made, no names given. I did say that. I'm just going to pick up where I was and continue my statement. Despite the chair of this committee declaring publicly that the city clerk had settled the matter of the Ward Five member's physical address, a letter from the city clerk's office negates this claim, and the city clerk continues to seek out the member's address, which he refuses to provide. We know that the building the Ward Five representative claimed to live at was condemned more than two months prior to his mayoral appointment to this committee. Ward Five has the legal right to representation from someone who resides within their ward.
Ms. Jones.
It is the responsibility of the rest of the committee to conduct an internal investigation into eligibility of the current Ward Five member and insist that he is held to the same standards as the rest of the committee. Speaking, I could hear it from behind me. I didn't realize it was you also. I was ignoring Melissa Dunn.
Okay. This meeting is for school committee business, is for school department business. All of the things that you're saying are not pertinent to the school functioning. But.
You can continue to try to defend it, but I am getting this out in the public. You can't shut me up about it. My statement is done. I'm going to sit down now.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order, please. So, honestly, I don't care who's up talking, speaking at the podium, but the public needs to refrain from making comments, whether it's for or against, and if they cannot refrain from making comments, then they need to be asked to leave. So I don't know who that falls on, but we need to respect both sides, and that needs to be followed. So I don't know whose responsibility it is to make sure that that happens, but I think we need to.
I'm hoping that everybody who's in attendance can proceed with appropriate decorum. Go, please go ahead. Oh, your mic is off now.
Oh, no, the mayor tells me I talk too loud. But anyway, Ward Six. And I'm also part-time at L. R. T. C. as a clinical supervisor for the C. N. A. program. I just want to support what Lisa is saying. The city is upset. A lot of people are upset what's going on, and it is a school board thing. And I was told by the city administrator deputy, it's the school board that has to do something about Ward Five and not the city. We're hoping to go to the city, too. This is not fair, and I was on the school board, and I know the rules. Lisa did not mention names or anything. Something needs to be done. This person should not be on the committee. The mayor did a false thing when he admitted, and the address is not in Ward Five. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Marcel Leclair, Ward Five, taxpayer. Come to you tonight to bring attention to significant concerns regarding the eligibility and conduct of current representative of Ward Five. It has come to our attention that Ward Five representative is reportedly not residing at the address officially provided for their constituency. Furthermore.
Sorry. Comments should not be repetitive, and it sounds like you're going in the same direction as what Lisa was already saying. So do you have anything additional to add that's not repetitive?
Yes. So furthermore, inquiries regarding their current place of residence have not been met refusal to disclose this information citing concerns for personal safety. While personal safety is a valid consideration, it is important to note that local law enforcement agencies, Lewiston nor Auburn Police Department, have no records of reports filed by the representative pertaining to such threats. This stands in contrast to public information regarding a police report concerning a firearm that was stolen from an unlocked vehicle associated with the representative. Such an incident raises questions about the consistency of caution and claims of heightened personal safety concerns.
This is way too specific to an individual member. It's not about school.
Everything to do with his ability to serve here at the school.
Not appropriate. It's not appropriate use of the time.
Okay, then the rest of my time is I support everything else that Lisa Jones has said, and I believe that an investigation needs to be brought against Ward Five representative, and that actions need to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jay Zimmerman. I live in Ward Five, and I teach at Montello. And I just want to change the tone a little bit and let you know some really cool things that we've been doing at Montello recently. You may not have known, but at the end of October, we had our third annual Harvest Festival. And this was a really exciting partnership between the school, our Parent Teacher Association, and some local nonprofits. We had over fifty families attend the school from four to six P. M. They participated in traditional New England crafts like cider making, like hand pressing apples into cider, doing seed saving with some experts from our state, working with Gather to Grow on some cooking taste tests, making seed art and potato prints. We had over a hundred and twenty students and siblings come out for this event, and I just wanted to share that with you, because I'm not sure that that got around to everyone. There was so much joy at this event, and it was just awesome to see kids from all different backgrounds coming together with their families at the school after hours. And I just really think it highlights the strength of having home and school partnerships and having partnerships with our local businesses and nonprofits. I think it's really beneficial to all of our students that we continue having these kinds of events, and that we make it widely known that they are going on and what the positive results are. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will continue. Agenda item number five is to receive and potentially vote on a field trip request for the Boston Museum of Science for McMahon Elementary School. Oh, oh, sorry. Please, we'll go back to agenda item number four for public comment.
Good evening. Jawa Muhammad, currently Ward Four. And first of all, thank you so much for the work that you're doing on our kids. I am father of seven. They are all from elementary to high school. So my oldest graduated from Lewiston High School right here. And I just want to share a little bit about, you know, I'm not just talking politically, but just straight directly, because I was a soccer player since I was seven years old, and I'm a very good soccer player, and I know exactly from A to Z. So sometimes, you know, when you lose or whatever, it's a way that you can show really your audience or maybe your supporters, like, hey, sorry, you know, you're trying to make excuses and trying to blame everything to the ref, like the referee. So I think it's, whatever you guys are incredible, and I thank you personally, and all our educators, for those who are teaching our kids. And I think it's a lot of stuff that we don't have a lot of decent to discuss here. So I know why you are here, just support our kids to continue whatever you're doing to our kids. But if there is any business out of this table, it should go where it's supposed to be. But thank you so much for the work that you're doing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jawa. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
It's going to be relevant to the school committee.
People saying harassing, personal attacks here.
Good evening. My name is Kieran Majors Collins. I live in Lewiston. I live in Ward Five. I just, I'll be brief. I think it's unfortunate the school committee has been subjected tonight to defamatory attacks, personal attacks, lies from members of the public. It's not what Lewiston Public Schools needs right now. It's not what the city of Lewiston needs right now. And I'm sorry that you all had to hear it tonight, but understand that those of us who live in Ward Five understand, feel good about our representation. And despite the whining of sore losers, that's not going to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have nothing to do with Lewiston Public Schools whatsoever, and he's insulting me, and you allowed it. That's pathetic.
Point of order. I have a quick question. As a committee, I have a quick question. And I don't know if this is like a legal thing that we need a question, an answer for, but are, are represent.
Can the audience be quiet so the committee member can speak?
Did I turn this off?
And members of the public, please show some respect for the committee member who is speaking. Melissa, are you okay with holding off a second so she can finish? Oh.
Thank you. I just have a question. Are, are representation, so lawyers or attorneys that are defending or representing committee members allowed to make public comment during public comment?
They're residents of Lewiston, yes. Yes.
Yes, they are. Okay, even if they're speaking in favor of their client that they're representing, it doesn't matter, just as long as they're a Lewiston resident. Gotcha. Thank you.
Were there any other members of the public that wanted to speak before I move on? Yes, please come up.
Martin Chartrand. I'm a resident of Ward Five and a behavioral health professional. I work with children in the area. I just want to thank the school committee and staff for all they're doing and for doing your best to keep a positive and productive meeting tonight amidst some chaos. And I want to express that I feel very fortunate to be represented by the person that is my representative for Ward Five, and I hope that business can go forward.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Agenda item number five is to receive and potentially vote on the field for request for the Boston Museum of Science for McMahon Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Brittany Hutchins. I teach fourth grade at McMahon.
And I'm Charlotte Johnson, principal at McMahon.
I'm coming to ask if we can take our fourth graders to Boston. This year, we have fifty-two students that are really eager to go. Our day would look like leaving the school around six A. M. We would take a charter bus down. We would go and walk the Freedom Trail, which directly relates to our curriculum. We study the American Revolution, and we were going to do a guided tour to really give students some of that history and bring it to life for them. And then we would have lunch on the bus, and we would like to spend the afternoon at the Museum of Science before returning to McMahon around six P. M. But we have done a bunch of fundraisers, and we're really close to raising all the money that we need already for the trip. We would have at least ten chaperones, at least six staff from the school, and we've had lots of parents that are willing to chaperone as well. And yeah, I don't know if you have any specific questions or.
Questions or comments from the committee member Eames?
This is not the first time you've done this, correct?
Correct. Two years ago, the fourth grade went for the same reason, to do the Freedom Trail.
So you know what you're getting into. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Member Heard?
I'd like to make a motion to approve McMahon's request for the field trip to go to Boston.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Have fun.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six is to receive and potentially vote on the field trip request for L. R. T. C. to travel to Southern Italy.
Good evening. My name is Rob Callahan. I'm the Director of L. R. T. C., and I'm here with two good colleagues from the Green Ladle, Tony Shera and Kelsey Poliquin, and we are here to ask for your permission to take a group to Southern Italy on a culinary tour. Tony and Kelsey will share about the detail, but I guess I would point out this is sort of a continuation of the series that we've begun. We started in Italy, went back to Italy last year, are headed to France this year, and we are looking forward into that next year about returning to Southern Italy this time to sort of continue that opportunity for students to get an international culinary exposure. So with that being said, they'll tell you about all the good stuff.
Yes, thank you, Tony Shera. Again, thank you for all the work that you do, too. We have some information to give you here. But like Mr. Callahan said, this would be our fourth trip with EF Tours, and they've been nothing but great with us. We've had the same tour guide. We're going to take him the third time. We're going to quest him. This is April of two thousand and twenty-seven, so our juniors now. They would be seniors. We discussed it with them. And this was the consensus to go to Southern Italy. They've heard us talking about how much fun we had in Northern Italy, and some of them are going to France with us as well. But yeah, we just love your permission. Again, this is a food-focused tour. This one in two thousand and twenty-seven, Chef Levac, who's not here, she kind of handcrafted this one with the people at EF to get more of the food involved. As you can see on the last page, there's a coffee tasting, buffalo mozzarella. There's two cooking classes while we're there, one pizza and one pasta-making class. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to answer questions, but it's been successful so far, and the kids love it. The biggest thing of this is it really gives our kids motivation, the work that they put in here at the Green Ladle. They really, they really work hard, and it benefits them. They see the payback. It's not just coming in here every day and serving the hundreds of turkey meals that we're working on this week, but it also, you know, the after-hours things that we do, it really, it really benefits them.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, we ask you this every time, but there's opportunities for students who might not be able to afford this themselves to attend?
There are. We do as much fundraising as we can, and I think every morning in our class, we talk to the students. We say, hey, if you have an idea, if there's something that you want to do, then you come to us. We'll put it together, all the pop-up sales we do. If they're going to make a clam chowder, then we'll sell a clam chowder. If they want to make tomato soups, we continue to sell the pizzas that we do every week, and the kids that get involved with those, they're directly benefit, and it goes straight into their EF account. We don't give them the money. It goes into the A. E. F. account. And we keep a great spreadsheet that who's working, the hours that they worked, and who wants to go. So yeah, it's totally, if they want to work, they can, they can earn it. They could pay for the whole trip if they, if they put in the work and put in the motivation. And we tell them that's, we lead every morning with that. We have a countdown to France in the kitchen, and we have a countdown to this again, with your permission.
Great. Thank you. Member Eames? Member Bowden?
I just wanted to say that last time you went to Italy, you came back, and I was not at the school committee meeting, and I don't remember why. I think I was sick, but I watched from home, and I was so, so jealous that I didn't get to try this spread of food. So I am prepared to approve this as long as you bring that spread of food back, and I get to.
Make the commitment now that when we come back from France, we'll come to see you, and after this trip to Italy, we'll come back and see you again. So France, whole different cuisine, but yeah, we know. I knew that was coming. I know. I'm sorry we let you down.
So I just wanted to say again, my usual riff, that the people with fewer resources are forced to work more hours in order to make up for the fact that their parents can't afford this trip. So I would once again beg you to figure out a way to spread out the goods. Thanks.
I mean, we are also starting this one earlier in hopes of having, so I mean, if you look at the monthly payments, you know, three hundred and eleven dollars versus if somebody signed up right now, it would be a thousand dollars for, well, for the France trip. So like, we are starting this earlier. We're more time to fundraise, more time to make the money for themselves here, where it won't even have to come out of their pocket potentially.
For themselves is the part that I'm worried about. I think it should be fairer if people all work together and put it into a general fund that everybody can benefit from if they need it.
Totally.
Totally. Understood. I mean, without saying too much, I mean, there are kids that come to us and say, there's no way that I could ever do this, and we do our best to make sure if they really want to go, that they get to go.
I mean, we have funded full trips for some students, so that's definitely, we don't want to make this impossible if somebody wants to go. We're not going to, you know, make them, force them to work if, you know, extra long hours are just, yeah, especially in today's economy. Like, we totally understand, and we want to make it possible for as many as possible.
Thank you. Member Heard?
Oh, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, yeah, I do. I was just going to ask, can you remind me how the flights work? So you book those separately, or the students book that separately, or is that included? So it's, everything's involved right in the tour. So we, we were with EF. They know our dates. We give them two dates at the beginning and then two dates at the end, and they fit it within that. And then they say, hey, do you want to go out of Boston? Do you want to go to Portland? We had a horrible time going out of Portland, so we said no. We went out to Boston, so then they do that, all that for us, everything. I mean, from the entrances to the museums that we go to, everything EF takes care of, and it's all included, and same with the flights. The flights are taken care of through EF. And that the fee is included?
Yep.
Flights, okay. Correct.
The rooms, their breakfasts, their dinners, all the hotels, all the entrances to any museums or any classes or things that we do. So that's everything from beginning to end.
Yeah, thank you. The only thing, you know, we have free times in the afternoons, and sometimes that's when they go and explore. And most of them went to the Italian McDonald's when they had the time. Very, it was very, Italy was very cheap, so, yeah, yeah.
Member Heard?
Thank you. So I just have to say, I love these, because I love, like Member Bowden said, all the food. And I do think it's a great educational experience for the kids. And honestly, I wish that all the kids had to work to pay for their trip, and their parents chose not to give them any money, because I don't think that it does them any good to not have to earn their way in this world. So I would like to make a motion to approve the field trip to Italy, Southern Italy.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda number seven is to receive and potentially vote on a field trip request for L. R. T. C. to travel to the Celtics Training Facility in Boston.
Thank you again, again, Rob Callahan, the Director of L. R. T. C., and I'm pleased to be here with one of our good colleagues from Jobs for Maine's graduates, Melissa Holmes. She's new to L. R. T. C. this year and has really gone out of her way to think about some exciting opportunities for our J. M. G. students to participate in. You're going to hear about one this evening called the Celtics Playbook. It's a partnership we've begun with the Boston Celtics that allows students to work alongside the Boston Celtics in their, at their Red Auer Buck facility in Boston, Mass, to work on some incredibly important themes around bullying, around inclusion, and around harassment that hopefully with this training, they will be trained as mentors for younger students. So they will not only be exposed to this at an exciting venue, but they'll bring back to Lewiston the opportunity to work with younger students and really hammer these messages home in a powerful way. So I'm going to let Melissa tell you more about that.
Thank you, Rob. Melissa Holmes, J. M. G. Specialist. Thank you for having me here tonight. He did a great job explaining the Celtics Playbook Initiative. I'm looking to take two students who have already been pre-selected through an application process where they filled out questions and were chosen because of their answers and how they would help this program. These two students would go from our technical center here at five in the morning. We would travel over to Portland to meet up with South Portland, Portland Endearing. So we'll have myself along with a couple other J. M. G. specialists and then a regular teacher from one of the schools down there, where we hop on a bus paid for by the Celtics and meet up at the Celtics facility. We hang out there the majority of the day, come back, we'd get to Portland about seven o'clock, where I would travel them back here to Lewiston to arrive at about eight o'clock in the evening. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yes. Member Bowden?
Okay, I have to ask, elephant in the room, are there going to be any Celtics players there?
There are Celtics players there. I can't guarantee who is there. I met Xavier, and I think his name is Sales or Skills. I'm not big on basketball, but I'm learning.
Any other questions, Member McGlaughlin?
Is this a program specifically for tech schools, or is it just, that just happened to be their relationship?
It just happened to be the relationship. So in Boston, they have Project Three Fifty-One, and they're working on these same initiatives to kind of bring anti-bullying and, you know, anti-bullying into the school systems with the middle school students. So basically, these high school students are going to train our middle school students and help bring that positivity up the line, hopefully to make us have a more robust population of the students that are here so that we can treat each other the way that we all should be treated. So where, it was presented to J. M. G., but we do have some schools, we had a middle school teacher. He's involved, and he's not a J. M. G. Specialist, so it is something that we would like to push beyond Lewiston, Auburn. It was done in Portland and South Portland last year and extended up to Lewiston, Auburn area this year. Hopefully, more of Maine going further.
Member Bowden?
What does J. M. G. stand for?
Jobs for Maine Graduates. You're welcome. Introduce that way, but. It's okay.
I'm assuming it's either juniors or seniors that are going this year?
It will be seniors this year. The potential was juniors or seniors, but based on the application pool, it came out to be two seniors. We have ambassadors as well. The ambassadors will learn from the trainers, but they won't be going to Boston, and those, we have a sophomore and a junior.
So will this hopefully continue every year so that as the students age out, they're still?
Yes, we are hoping for. Yes, we are hoping for it to continue. So you might see me again.
Member Boden.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the field trip for LRTC to travel to Boston to the Celtics Training Facility.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you for bringing this.
Thank you all. Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Agenda item number eight is to receive the transportation request for proposed, request for proposal update.
So we have, uh, an RFP going out for transportation because it's that time and Alyssa is here. If, um, Alyssa, if you want to come up to just share a little, Alyssa's done a lot of work this year. Um, I think in the challenges we've had with transportation, we want to be as robust as we can with this proposal process. And so, uh, there was a sense that if we were going to get different interests, we would have to do some different work with our proposal effort. And Alyssa's taken the lead on that and done a great job with, um, well, I'll let you share some more, but what went into this proposal, um, but also as an opportunity to say it publicly, the RFP for transportation for Lewiston Public Schools is out there. Uh, so if you want to share a little backstory to it.
Absolutely. So as we're looking at our request for proposal, we are currently contracted out, contracted out for our buses. And that's our big yellow buses, our mini buses, um, a lot of our white fleet that goes around. Um, and so when we're looking at that, we are in a cycle that we are prepared to go back out to look for who is the most competent contractor to do this work. Um, so what is out there right now is called the Request for Proposal. A lot of it, it is sixty-four pages. She's, she's a big contract. Um, or a request for proposal. What we're looking for is competent, um, bidders that will meet the needs of our very diverse progressing city. When I am looking at our routes right now, we are running a hundred and forty-eight trips daily just on our big buses. And then you throw in all those mini vans that were equally spreading around the city. So it is sheer, um, magnitude when we're looking at it. And then what I'm finding is the comparison around the state of Maine. We are, we are the largest player. Portland does a huge amount too, but we contract out a large amount. So we want to make sure that our, um, bidders are going to be competent. That means if we have an accident, which we hope will never happen, that we have all the right liabilities taken care of and that that person will be able to, or that company will be able to take that on. We are, um, currently working with school bus logistics on this as well. Um, and we have some, some of those people that are helping us were, they're expert witnesses if a bus was to get in an accident with all those children on it. And so taking those best practices and applying it to our request for proposal to make sure we are indeed covered for any and all scenarios. The other aspect is technology has changed tremendously and that means parents, um, absolutely care about where their kids are. We absolutely care about where their kids are. So making sure that we are putting that out there, that we are looking for technology that is flexible, um, not only for parents, but also our staff. Um, for me in the transportation office as well, um, and that we're just making sure we have the most robust, um, showing possible. With that being said, we already have solicited a couple of people that said, please send it to me directly, but it is available for anyone, um, to go through and browse it, um, and request and all of that. We're in a question period at the moment. So if they have questions on that proposal, the deadline is the nineteenth at the moment, and then we will be answering those questions again, publicly putting them out so everyone, everybody can see what's out there. Um, and then from that point, we then go into, um, a more robust procedure as far as what we get back in the grading on that.
Do you have more to add?
Just to say, once, once we get, hopefully we get bids back and we can examine them and go through a rating scale and have something in front of you, um, as soon, as soon as possible. Um, but this is a multi-million dollar commitment. Can usually there, we try to get a five-year agreement, um, but it's not an inexpensive thing. So I definitely want to make sure it was in front of you that this is, this is happening in case you're hearing about it.
And I would add that part of this process, um, and looking at how we've done it in the past, this is, it's transparent. We need it out there. So we know people are available for that. Once we get to the point of that grading, then we enter into more of those legal standings as far as what the actual contract looks like. So this is just getting out, have those bidders come pa, come back and then we get to that really legal back and forth period at that point.
Could either of you just briefly speak, briefly, briefly, speak to why we have a contracted bus service when many other districts have their own buses? Why, why do we do it that way?
I, I can go, you can go.
Go ahead.
Um, I was going to say, so I mean, part of it is when I'm looking back over the years of use, we've always contracted out for the most part. I actually found, um, very, very old nineteen fifty's budget where we had one bus. Um, and so the answer is a lot of our city was always relying on public transportation or other means to get students to and from school. We are now a very diverse, um, city that has very diverse needs. We have city streets that some are traversable, some are not. All of those things come in that we now have a bus service. With that being said, if we were to do our own in-house bus service, we would need a physical bus yard. We would need a mechanics, multiple garages, oil, tires, all of those things. So it's not impossible to, to do that work, but there is a cost associated with doing that switch. Um, it is one that I've taken a brief glimpse at to say, what would that look like? And, um, without coming back and saying a lot of money and millions of dollars, um, it has left us saying, what, what is the best practice? So there could be a day that we say, maybe we want to do more of our own. With that, we would also need to get all this certified staff involved. So that means a CDL clearinghouse, background checks. That includes driving as well as the training of those staff members. Um, so a lot of other districts, they do this, they do, um, we are absolutely part of the Maine Association of Transportation and the National Association for Pupil Transportation. And I've been doing a tremendous amount of work in the last couple of years to get us up to speed on what that would look like. And I would have to say is it is a very, very steep hill to climb, but it could be doable if that's what the city chose to do.
All I know is I've been here a long time and always contracted. We've never had a run buses. I don't, other than that, I don't know the history of it.
Yeah.
Member Heard.
Thank you. Um, if we're being realistic here, there's probably only one company logistically that could handle.
So there's at least two.
There's more.
That might be interested, but we've, Alyssa's done some legwork around this. Um, there's at least, I think, three more that we think might.
We, we are being, um, we have vendors coming out from Colorado that owns some national, um, contracting service. Um, I also am very familiar with the ones that are running Texas pupil transportation down there. I'm not going to actually say them by name to be respectful of all the different contractors that are bidding. Um, we have ones that are into the EV category. I've done a lot of research on that as well. So we're going to get a really robust showing, not only of the, the vehicles we're using now, which is gas and diesel, but also of that EV market. And so I actually feel that I'm going to be able to approach you with some options. They are all going to come with cost. Um, and I've done a lot of research on what that would look like for our city to do those, those conversions as well. So it's not to say that's not to be graded. Part of the request for proposal is what is the transition plan for a successful, um, contractor? So we are not left in a lurch. That's the, the biggest part I'm looking at. But we are, from what I'm seeing, I think I have at least four to five, also those consultants as they're out and about, they are finding other, um, areas that go, oh my goodness, I did not realize Maine had such a big fleet. I'm hearing we are the biggest in the, um, New England region, um, short of going down to Boston and some of those areas. So we actually have quite a draw for some of those bidders to come in, but we do have our local ones as well. So we absolutely are soliciting, um, out or sending it out to them for them to have a chance.
Member Glenn.
Um, yes, uh, I have, I heard you talk about EV a little bit, um, concerns about that. Um, other school districts have been having difficulty keeping the, the batteries or what, or whatever it is that they're using, um, especially during the very cold months. So I'm, I'm a little leery about that. Unless you have a little bit more information, it's.
Without, um, making a, a person that's looking at our request for proposal field onto, right now, we're just soliciting for those, those, you know, how much money and all of that. The research I've done though, is that we do have to prepare an infrastructure for such, um, for those vehicles to come in. There is a company that was operating and some of those vehicles were bought in the state of Maine. That company is no longer in business. Um, it doesn't mean there's not other ones out there. Different states have different, um, in California, they can, you turn on that air conditioning system and that vehicle doesn't work as well. In another state, you turn on the heater, it doesn't work as well. So I'm very much looking at those pluses and minus. The last thing we want to do is hear of a vehicle stranding anywhere. So that goes back to that competency in that request for proposal that we're going to have people say, these are the vehicles that will meet our needs and that includes our terrain, um, and knowing that we will run when there's some snow on the ground. Um, and that cold weather. Um, so some of our vehicles now, I mean, it could be, do we have engine block heaters on them? Um, and then what is that bus garage or bus yard look like to make sure those vehicles will be start up and running comfortably for the students as they go? So there's a lot of considerations, um, and it even goes right down to the safety. What kind of lights are on the outside of that bus? Um, there's new technology that's out there. Um, so it'll be interesting to see back on stop arm lights that maybe can take some photos of some passing vehicles that should be stopping. Um, so we definitely have, um, some things to look at, but all of that, because we pay, I have to be, we want it to be competent and with the law and represent all of that, but also there is costs associated with those technologies. So those are some of the considerations when we get to the grading to say, how do we grade that? And so that is part of our grading.
Member McGufflin.
Can you clarify? So this would be starting next school year?
The, the contract right now would be starting for July first of twenty twenty-six. The reason we are starting this process now to build a school bus, to request a school bus, takes at least six months. So this means we're getting those contractors in place, whoever we say we're going with, and it even could be our current one. We would be getting a new fleet of buses based on the mileage of our current vehicles. That would just be something that would happen. And it takes them a while to go to the, um, manufacturers, um, to get the right specs and buses and get those in and get them all outfitted with cameras and sound and all the, the bells and whistles. So part of that is a natural changeover that happens, but this is a year that, um, we're going to get some new fleet vehicles. Um, whether we stay with our current contractor or go out, it looks like that's what's going to happen.
Right. And so when, when would, when are you hoping to award the contract?
So the, um, award of the request for proposal we're, we're aiming for, and I, and we'll, we'll talk with Jake and make sure we're all on the same, because if we don't get a good bid comeback or we need to go back out, that could be an option too. We were aiming for the December fifteenth meeting to at least approach you guys with, this is the one that we recommend. And then at that point, they would have the knowledge to go out and get those buses while we work on the legal details of the contract. Um, to make sure everything is indeed in order. Um, but again, that is a flexible deadline based on what we get for those proposals coming in or if we have questions that we need to go back and answer to, to make sure we do get, um, competition in there.
That's good. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? And you don't need a vote from us tonight. So I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine is to receive the school revolving funds update.
Uh, so Bill's here if we have follow-up questions, but essentially, um, on a rotating basis, there's the revolving renovating funds and, uh, the state has some guidelines and, and those shift as to what areas of focus, um, are allowable. And as we've done work with our facilities assessment, uh, some things have been pointed out around ADA accessibility. Uh, so Bill has worked with others to put together a proposal. Um, we do have to notify you that we're submitting that. So that's part of that being on the agenda. It's a about two million dollars, uh, and the way the revolving funds work and the committee's been supportive of us, uh, doing this is that the, if awarded, they pay seventy percent of whatever work is done in, in that agreement. So, um, if it's not awarded, then we try it. If it is awarded, we can, we can have things improved again, only thirty percent of the cost to us. Most of the ADA components are access points, entryways, doors, uh, pathways, things like that that are out of compliance right now. So any questions on submitting that? Okay. Bill, do you know the timeline on when we get notice of if we receive those?
It's the first of the year and then the bond has to be voted on in February. So the city, so if we are awarded, it's a bit of a process. If we are awarded, city council will vote to accept the bond, similar to what we do.
Process similar to what LRTC got for funds. Do you remember that? They got some funds for different equipment and it was bonded. That one wasn't seventy percent. It was, it was a full payback, I believe. But, uh, it was the same idea. We had to take it to the city and ask them to approve it because it was bonded.
Agenda item number twelve is to re, review and potentially vote on the second read for policies listed as A through D. Member Heard.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read of the following policies listed A through D.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Agenda item number eleven is report from the school committee chair. I have nothing to report this evening. Twelve is report from the superintendent.
Uh, just a few things to hit on. Um, we met with, um, Harriman today. They are doing our facilities assessment work and they are near complete. We looked at some draft reports. Um, we will, we'll have that. I shared it for two reasons. One, it gives us that ten-year window of planning for things that they recommend we do, whether it's code, compliance, uh, just maintenance and keeping our buildings in good working order. Uh, but also at the very end of this project, what they're doing is helping us with the concept plan for two eighty-seven Main Street. So, uh, we have a meeting set in, I think, December. We're going to talk about setting dates and looking at a schedule for public input, concept design ideas, those kinds of things. So you'll be hearing more about that. Let's see here. The Student Resource Center, uh, shared a newsletter recently. We also shared that out on, online. Uh, they were also featured, uh, was it Friday, uh, on the news, uh, one of the channels, uh, who came and did some video footage, but some really good things happening in the Student Resource Center. Um, and, and donations are coming in and they're getting them processed. And we have volunteers from Bates and other places. So it's a, it's a really good thing that's happening. Also, uh, recently, uh, I was asked to speak, um, went with a member from Tree Street at Ascend, which is a conference for nonprofit efforts. And, um, a bit of a recognition for some of the collaborative efforts that we're doing with different partners in the community, um, and looking for ways to grow those efforts with other community partners as well. It seemed to go pretty good. It was well received. Uh, the budget schedule is made and so we'll be bringing that to you. You may see some things popping up in the calendar, um, for city meetings and, and those components. And then the last thing I want to share is the speed bumps that you see outside. We're working on a process with those, but some of them are going to have to be pulled for plowing. Uh, we'll see what things have to be pulled, what things won't. Um, it might end up being all of them. And Bill is, uh, doing some research on some other speed bump, um, measures. Um, these are made to be pulled up and put back down. But, uh, we're also looking at maybe some of the larger ones that maybe aren't so abrupt, but serve the same purpose. Uh, the question will be how much and how many should we have? Uh, it's a big campus. So we're looking at those.
Thank you. Agenda item number thirteen is report from our city council rep.
Thank you. Um, so at our last meeting, that was October twenty-first, a couple of items that you might have seen in the news. Um, we amended the, the lease for Mill Seven, which is the new home to the police station. Uh, some of the construction cost overruns were not reflected in the monthly lease payment. So we updated that so that we're, um, covering those. And we also received an update from the police department regarding the flock AI cameras that they're installing around the city. And then coming up tomorrow evening is our next meeting and, um, just a couple of items on there. We're, we're finishing up the syringe service program ordinance and there's also the public hearing for the, uh, this is more of just an informational thing, the holiday at the Plaza celebration, um, which will be happening December sixth, Saturday, December sixth. That's at Dufrane Plaza downtown. They'll be lighting the Christmas tree and lighting the menorah. And, um, yeah, December sixth, rain date of December seventh. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen is update from any subcommittees. I don't think anyone has met. Nope. I, agenda item number fifteen is school committee community announcements. None of those either. Okay. Um, agenda item number sixteen, future agenda items. Member Heard.
Thank you. So it is in a request for a future agenda item, but I had emailed, um, separately yourself and Jake and, uh, member Eames to ask about the flag policy update. Um, and I just wanted to let the general public know that, um, it was because the policy committee meeting was rescheduled and so it will be coming up soon at some point on our agenda. But I just wanted to share that because it was only just with a few of you. Thank you.
Member Glenn.
Uh, yes, um, I'd like to at some point get some updates on Montello School. Um, just see how things are going there. We haven't heard anything for a while. So I think I'd like to get some updates about things going. We haven't heard anything for a while, so I think I'd like to get some updates about things going on there. Um, also, um, a question about the Student Resource Center, just as my clarification. If, is that where, if someone needs, if a child or student needs food or is food insecure, how would a first grader go about doing that?
So the, the easiest way, um, we have points of contact in every school, and they help facilitate getting things to each school for the kids to have.
Is it possible to have a pantry in every school?
So we, we do, and that, that point of contact has a closet or, or resources, or Natasha, the T, will bring it to the school for them.
Okay, cuz.
So that, that network already exists with the Student Resource Center.
Okay, cuz, um, I would think that that could be a barrier if a, you know, if someone can't get over there to the, to the center. And, you know.
The, the center does drop-ins, uh, there, but it's also kind of like a mini distribution center that it does push stuff out to other schools.
Okay, so we have pantries within the schools themselves, so that if a teacher or whoever sees someone that's hungry, or a child tells a teacher they're hungry, there's a way for them to get some food. Thank you.
Member Boden?
Thank you. Um, so I had a teacher stop me recently, um, from the high school and was questioning, um, I want to say it was the biology lab, possibly, might have been the chemistry lab at the high school, and how outdated it is, and wondering if there's anything we can do to update that. And is that in the works already?
I don't know if Bill wants to come up, but yeah, so we had two hundred thousand dollars approved in the LCIP last year, and there's assessment work being done on labs. I don't know which ones in specific you're talking about, but we are looking at the science labs.
Yeah, chemistry labs in particular.
Okay.
And looking at those. And then we are also, it, it was coinciding with the facilities assessment, so this is one of the things Harriman's putting in the report is about those. But yes, there, there is some outdated things in there, and, um, one of them is the gas that is hooked up in there, because the way they ran it through the floor and over the years, um, that deteriorated, so we had to seal off the gas there, so they use, uh, portable type butts and murders is what I've been told that they're using, but obviously, the largest high school in the state, you know, we've heard people talk about that, and, and we need to do something with those, so. It's, it's definitely on the, in the works for something to be done about those for renovations.
That was already on. Um, agenda item number seventeen is to enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter in accordance with one MRSA four oh five six A.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?